Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please be seated. I am finally informing you that this meeting has been recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services who will be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. It is with sadness that I inform members of the deaths of former councillors Evelyn Donegan, Ken Reid and Cathy Cox. Evelyn Donegan served as a councillor for the Harton Ward from 1992 to 2000 and was a former deputy mayor of South Tyneside. Ken Reid served as a South Shields County Borough Councillor for the Cleaton Park Ward from 1971 to 1973 and for the Bidde Corn Ward from 1976 to 1982. Cathy Cox served as a councillor for the Springvale and South Tyneside Ward from 1979 to 1982 and the Bead Ward from 1982 to 1987. She was also a mayor of South Tyneside from 1984 to 1985. I invite members to reflect on their collective contribution to South Tyneside. On behalf of all members and officers, I would like to give recognition to councillor Ian Martin, leader of South Tyneside Council on his recent appointment as Chair of the North East Combine Authority and also of the Martinis Wales Chief Executive on his appointment as President of SONS, the Society of Local Authorities Chief Executives. These appointments are well deserved and a possible reflection of South Tyneside Council's leadership, providing new opportunities for South Tyneside to be heard on a national platform. And finally, our congratulations to the dailies on their success at the Real Business Awards in London, having won the category of Accessibility and Integration Transport Excellence for delivering an unprecedented level of additional medical services in 2018. Still of the high level profile events co-added in South Tyneside included the Albany Constance South Shields and the Great North Road. First item of business is declarations of investment. No declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of council held on the 7th of January 2019. Are they accepted as a true record? The next business is mass communications. There are no mass communications to report on this occasion. The next business is the councillor's report of the corporate director, business and resources on the handle tomorrow, changes happening medium term financial plan 2019 to 2024 with draft budget recommendations. This is an important decision and I want members to be clear about how I will conduct the debate. The constitution requires that anyone wishing to speak... I beg your pardon, I'll start it again. The constitution requires that anyone wishing to move an amendment to budget proposals must give two working days' notice to the chief executive. No notice has been given of any amendments. I will ask councillor Ed Martin to move the motion. After councillor Martin's speech, the motion will be seconded. The second I may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later. I will then open the debate on the main motion and there will be an opportunity for all members to ask questions or speak for up to three minutes. The opposition member councillor Milver can speak for up to 10 minutes. As usual, I will allow the leader to close the debate. Councillor Ed Martin.
Well thank you Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, when I was first elected to the council, the then head of peer service said to me that the council chamber is the place to play out the theatre of politics. And the other point, the council chamber is where we can exchange views and hecklers across the chamber on subject matter. However, I don't think we'll be doing that this evening. With sometimes serious exchanges, sometimes with a hint of humour. However, there is nothing humorous in the fact that the budget I present tonight is another austerity budget as a result of Conservative government cuts. The coming year, the council has been forced to save another £12 million with more defined in future years. The total Conservative austerity cuts imposed on South Tyneside residents has been £168 million. And keeping on the theatrical note, it is a tragedy that an article in the New York Times commented that after eight years of budget cutting, Britain is looking less like the rest of Europe and more like the United States with a shrinking welfare state and spreading poverty. Who has borne the brunt of the government cuts to date? Of course it's local governments, the local state, which has lost over 60% of its core government grant in the period between 2010 and April 2019. When speaking of local government finance, the former minister William Waldegrave said it was the most boring and complicated subject in all of public life. But let me say this, there is nothing boring about continuing government austerity cuts which are having a detrimental effect on our people and our communities. This Labour-led council has been forced and been faced with the most difficult choices on how we provide services and how we have already lost 40% of real spending power over the last nine years and we are in the top three councils worst hit by austerity cuts. Nevertheless, what we are striving to do in this budget, as in previous budgets, is to try and mitigate long-term impact for the borough and the people we serve and represent. I think that this Labour council should be proud and that even in the toughest and challenging of times we have continued to deliver services that people need and we do all we can to improve the lives of people of South Tyneside and in particular for those who are most vulnerable. The shape and scope of the council is constantly evolving and we've had little choice and we've had to do things differently. The budget that I present to the council this evening is in keeping with our financial strategy and continues with the policy and main approaches to the efficiencies that we have to make, focusing on delivering greater value for money, being successful in avoidantly and creatively doing different things. Increasing income generation through new and existing services, achieving efficiencies on external contracts and infrastructure, reducing services that are no longer sustainable and continue to work in partnership with the community and the voluntary sector to deliver services whilst also ensuring financial sustainability. And we want to continue to build strong communities, protect the vulnerable and do what we can to grow the economy. Members are well aware that we continue to experience an unprecedented growth in children and adult care services. In this budget, we are proposing to raise the adult social care rate by 1%. But let's be clear, this won't give us anywhere near enough resources to keep pace with demand. Yes, it's acknowledged that we have received funding in the autumn for 2018-19 and 2019-20. That's £915,000 in 2018-19 and £2.4 million in 1920. But that does not address the long-term solution that is needed in both adult and children's social care. As I have stated, there continues to be demographic pressures across the whole of social care. People are living longer, which is a good thing, but consequently, people are living longer with more complex needs and we want to help people to live independently for longer and enable them to take responsibility for their own wellbeing. We have therefore had to transform and change what we do if we are to meet these demands that we have in adult and children's services. Because the earlier we can intervene and provide the support that is needed, the greater the benefits including a reduction in escalating costs. For example, in children's services, we are working to strengthen families at the earliest opportunities through incentives like our new family's first service, which helps prevent longer term, more intensive involvement at an earlier date. In adult services, we have transformed access through our new front door model, which helps us to connect residents to resources in their community. And we continue to wait for the government's brief paper on adult social care. We continue to remain committed to improving the health and wellbeing of our residents. We are seeing health improvements across the borough with a reduction in the number of people smoking and associated mortality rates. Like all councils, we are seeing increasing pressure on funding received from government for children and special educational needs. With the support of our schools, we have transferred the maximum we are allowed, which is £450,000 from school's funding to support each children. And it still isn't enough. The government have recognised this and have given the council additional funding in 2018-19 and 2019-20, £310,000 for each year. But this still does not give us the funding that we require to cover increasing costs in this area. And our education achievements go from strength to strength. 85% of our schools are good or outstanding and the number of outstanding schools is higher than the regional and national average. At 68%, the number of 11-year-olds reaching the expected standards in reading and writing in maths is higher than the national average. South Tyneside 16-year-olds have made more progress in key stage four than in 2016-17 and the number achieving English in maths at level five has also increased. And we know how important it is to have a strong and robust local economy. We remain committed to create a new economic future for the borough. That is why our capital investment programme remains strong, ambitious, but affordable. The programme has seen £850 million invested since 2010 with a further £250 million to invest over the next five years. We have a capital investment programme to ensure that we have better housing in neighbourhoods, increased business and jobs, strong and independent families, healthier people, innovation and efficiency. This investment has facilitated growth and improved the borough. There has been investment in leisure centres including Haven Point, Heaven Central and Jarrow Focus. Phase two of the South Shields 365 Master Plan is well underway with the construction of the £21 million South Shields Transport Interchange continuing at a pace and expected to be completed this summer. Iron is expected to support 7,000 new jobs and attract approximately £400 million of private investment over the next 10 years. Plans are also on the way to develop the Holborn Riverside site. We continue to invest in roads, footpaths, beaches and the St Front. I can announce today that we will be investing £3 million in our roads and footpaths, which is considerably more than in previous years, and £232,000 on the North Marine Park to support the £1.9 million external funding that we have secured. And we are attracting inward investment and we work hard to attract funding and investment from other sources to finance major infrastructure projects. And this council is committed to protecting the environment and reducing council's carbon footprint. For example, we have invested in PV and wind projects utilising the contaminated land in the Viking Business Park between Groundwork and Tedcor to generate renewable energy supply. We have invested £1.5 million in that. The Viking Energy Network Jarrow, which is to take low-grade heat from the Rotherham and convert it using newer heat pool technologies to provide a renewable heating supply to buildings in the vicinity, £7 million. Feature projects include LED street lighting replacements, £1 million in 1920. The Middlefield Storage Battery, and this is a method of storing electricity generated by PV and wind at Middlefields, which cannot be used immediately. We're investing £800,000 in 1920 for that project. And housing is important to us. The provision of good, affordable housing is a high priority. We have the lowest rents in Tynan. We have 450 new homes were built in 2018, 88 of which were built by South Tyneside Housing Ventures, our housing company. And they have built over 391 high-quality, affordable houses since its formation. And I can announce today that we will continue to have an extensive housing capital programme of £14.80 million in the coming year. In the LGA Corporate Peer Review, which was conducted in April 2017, the peer team found that elected members were passionate about their communities. They had a good understanding of local issues and the peer team were impressed in the way that they were addressing these issues through the community area forums in partnership with their local communities. So recognising the importance of community area forums and the importance of caps spending money that fits their own priorities, I am pleased to announce today that the community area forums will have £1.4 million at their disposal in the forthcoming year. Mr Mayor, as a council, we simply cannot do everything. Our model of transferring community assets such as the local libraries, the community associations is working well. However, we need to further encourage and support social action and harness civic pride. And everyone can contribute to help the community of South Tyneside. The new Love South Tyneside campaign aims to recognise and encourage those who wish to play a part, whether big or small, to help other people's lives and the environment. The introduction of universal credit has caused great hardship for many families. As the MP Frank Fields has argued, for the first time in post-war history, the state has become a generator of destitution. The council recognises the risk of destitution isolation that universal credit can mean to the most vulnerable in our community. And let me assure members tonight, no one will be left behind in South Tyneside. We have a dedicated welfare reform team, we finance a support partner, which is the Business Bureau, and I can announce today that although many types of councils have struck their welfare funds, we will continue to allocate £188,000 to the council's discretionary hardship fund. We take our responsibilities to community safety very seriously and very conscientiously. And crime in South Tyneside is historically low. We are proposing to reduce the number of CCTV cameras that we have. We currently have 109 cameras. This is the highest in the north, in the north east of any north east councils. The proposal is to reduce the number of cameras by half. However, fixed cameras will remain in areas that they are most needed, such as town centres, and there will be an increase in use of mobile cameras. We will work with the police to ensure that there is sufficient coverage in the borough. We are confident that the planned reduction of CCTV cameras will not have a detrimental effect on the community's safety in the borough. The budget also proposes to cease the community warden service. There are currently six wardens who have to respond to low-level antisocial behaviour issues. We appreciate the work that the wardens have done. However, it is a service which is just not affordable. At its height, there were around 20 wardens in South Tyneside funded by the long-gone neighbourhood renewal fund. In two of our credits, this council continued to pay for the service after the fund stopped. All other Tynanware authorities have ceased to fund the service. Mr Mayor, the true cost of austerity cannot be denied. Local government may have been badly hit, but the damage now stretches into every area of the public sector: hospitals, schools, social care, police and community safety. It is because of this that we are proposing in this budget a 3.95% increase in council tax, incorporating the 1% for the adult social care precept. This equates to around 76 pence for band A households in which the majority of households in South Tyneside fall. It will allow us to raise £60.5 million. Members will be aware that the increased precept set by the police will be 21.75% and 2.9% set by the fire authority. I would remind members that 19.7% of council's plant will feed council tax in 2019-20 and 75% is those by more than 2.5%. It's never an easy decision to raise council tax. We know that many in our communities are struggling to make ends meet, but financial cuts and government complacency has left us with no other option. Mr Mayor, there is no standard isolation for local government. The policies initiated by the government obviously have consequences for us as a local authority. The government's defining policy of austerity has been revealed to the international community as callous, as ineffective and even unBritish. These truths come from the United Nations envoy. The UN Special Rapporteur on poverty commented the Conservatives' government's policies are not driven by economics but a commitment to achieving radical social engineering. The Tories want to demolish the last pillars of the post-war social democratic consensus regardless of the cost and human misery. This is the climate in which local government now has to work. And the financial uncertainty looks set to continue. The four-year deal which we signed with government runs out in March 2020. There seems to be no clarity over funding levels, either nationally and locally, after that date. The government also intends to change how local government in England is funded, moving from the dependence on the revenue support grant by interestingly amount of business rates which can be retained locally from 50% to 75%. The government is also undertaking a fair funding review to update the needs assessment and the new funding baselines to be implemented as part of the 75% business retention scheme from April 2010-2020. Any new funding scheme should not unfairly discriminate against areas with historically lower levels of business activity. Current government proposals also fail to recognise the impact of deprivation as a driver of cost. This is a great concern for us in South Tyneside. And of course, there is the fiasco that is Brexit. And no deal Brexit would be the worst of all outcomes for South Tyneside. In recommending this budget to members this evening, I can assure the chamber that this Labour-led council will continue to listen, engage with and deliver for our residents. We will never stop looking for and finding new ways to deliver high standard and sustainable services in the face of future government cuts. We will fight for a fairer funding scheme for local government. We will continue to use the powers at our disposal to make a real difference to people's lives. Mr Mayor, I commend this budget to council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled?
Settle.
Now we move the debate on the main motion. Do any members wish to ask questions or speak? I will ask the leader to close the debate on the main motion approving the recommendations made by Cabinet in the report.
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, can I just offer my condolences as well to the three members who are passing you mentioned earlier on in the evening. But we have overlooked one member who passed away and that is Lon Davison, who was a member of the Progressive Party, was a councillor for Holsey Hill for a number of years and took a great interest in the community of Holsey Hill, a great figure. And towards the end of his life, he saw the light, converted and joined the Labour Party and was a tremendous help to myself, Eileen and Mark. So we mourn Lon's passing as well. Normally, Mr Mayor, as leader, I'm required to react to the opposition budget and I'm given the opportunity to sort of make my comments, to reflect and the misconceptions that come from the opposition benches. But unfortunately, the opposition has decided not to attend today and neither have they decided to give notice of an alternative budget. And you know, colleagues, whatever political persuasion you are, representing the people of South Tyneside is a tremendous honour. And ensuring that the voices of residents are heard is a fundamental requirement of being an elected member. And if you are an opposition member, even though you face benches full of Labour members, you still have a duty to speak for those who do not support the Labour Party in this borough so that their voices are heard. And the late Jim Capstick always made sure that an alternative budget was proposed in this chamber and it's just a shame that the opposition is not continuing that. Let no one who is either in a gallery or watching this video on the internet feel that this debate has only lasted 30 minutes. Let no one be under any illusion that members of the Labour Group have been meeting in constant session looking at the budget proposals which have been presented to them by lead members during the course of the past 12 months. And we have had robust challenge, a lot of questions and a lot of discussion about how this budget should be framed and how we should seek new innovative ways of working to ensure that we can deliver good quality services for the residents of South Tyneside. Because as councillor Martin said, we've had £168 million taken from us since May 2010, £12 million in this budget with more to come. And that means there are some tough choices which we have to take. And during the course of the year, may be under no illusion that we have been held to account by Labour Group members on a regular basis. I agree simply because I think councillor Martin has covered the budget and he has covered the austerity and the effects which austerity is having on local services very well. So let me just thank him on my behalf and on the council's behalf for the work that he does with officers every single day to make sure that we are operating within the financial constraints which are presented to us by central government. Let me thank officers and lead members who have met literally in continuous session since our last budget and we will begin the budget process for 2020-21 almost immediately in the next few weeks. That's how robust and how much work goes in to balancing the books on South Tyneside. Let me thank each and every one of those individual lead members. Let me thank each and every one of those individual lead members. Mr Mayor, I want to just emphasise that South Tyneside council, within our statutory obligations, because that is what the bulk of the work that we do as a council, it is a statutory requirement from central government to ensure that we provide adult social care, maintenance of the road infrastructure and looking at the licensing, checking the quality of the food in the restaurants and checking the petrol. All of these services are a statutory requirement from government. What I think is Councilman Malcolm has outlined, there is becoming a point, a breaking point, where local government is not going to be able to honour and to implement its statutory requirements from central government. They can't keep asking us to do more, and they gave us public health from the NHS and then reduced the budget. They can't keep asking local government to do more without giving us the resources in order to do the work. Not because we fancy doing it, but because the government by statute empowers and requires us to do that work. And we can't do our job effectively, colleagues, unless we're given the adequate resources from central government. Something will eventually have to give. And I hope that the people of this country who I know value local authority services, they really do, will make their voices heard in the local elections and in any future general election so that we have representatives in both this chamber and the House of Commons who are speaking up for local government and speaking up for local services and making sure that we have adequate resources going forward. And at the very heart of that is changing the funding formula for local government, which is manifestly unfair to areas like South Tyneside and is grossly, engrossly biased towards areas like Leafee, Surrey. It really is a real sore point for the local government association, the way in which the funding formula is manipulated to benefit some of the better off areas in our country. And as Councilman Malcolm pointed out, we are the third worst hit local authority in England. So finally, Chair B, absolutely under no illusion that this council will continue to honour and meet our statutory obligations within the financial envelope that we're given by government. But running alongside that, as the shapers of place, as the civic leaders, as the people the community look to to guide and drive transformation in their borough, we will continue with our radical, ambitious transformation plans for South Tyneside. And yes, in an age of austerity, it's a lot of money, as it's mentioned in the budget. It's a lot of money. But it is money that we also get from partners such as Local Enterprise Partnership, the private sector from Nexus, and indeed on occasion from central government itself. But I would contend that it is a transformation we cannot afford not to do because of the new jobs that it will create, the economic prosperity which it will give us and for future generations, and indeed in terms of the hullbone, the new footfall that it will bring to South Tyneside town centres, given retailers confidence to locate in our town centre once again. So, Mr Mayor, let me once again thank Councilman Ed Malcolm for his budget presentation this afternoon, and I commend the budget to the chamber.
Thank you. Legislation now requires a lame vote is taken on certain decisions relating to the budget. I will therefore ask the head of these services to come up with a vote.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The vote being conducted in the usual manner, I will call out the name of each member in turn, and if they did agree, whether they are voting for or against the motion or are abstaining. So I'll start now. Councilor Amar or? Councilor England or? Councilor Atkinson?
Four.
Councilor Taylor?
Four.
Councilor?
Apologies.
Councilor Brady?
Four.
Councilor Claire?
Four.
Councilor Cumming? Councilor Dean?
Four.
Councilor Dick?
Four.
Councilor Dix?
Four.
Councilor Dixon?
Four.
Councilor Bonson?
Four.
Councilor Duncan?
Four.
Councilor Ellison?
Four.
Councilor Flair?
Four.
Councilor Foreman? Councilor Gibson?
Four.
Councilor Hamilton?
Four.
Councilor Hay?
Four.
Councilor Hetherington?
Four.
Councilor Hofson?
Four.
Councilor Holden?
Four.
Councilor Keegan?
Four.
Councilor Kerr?
Four.
Councilor Kagar?
Four.
Councilor Leece?
Four.
Councilor E Malkin?
Four.
Councilor I Malkin?
Four.
Councilor K Maxwell?
Four.
Councilor N Maxwell?
Four.
Councilor N E Maxwell?
Four.
Councilor McKay?
Four.
Councilor McKeer?
Four.
Councilor McMillan?
Four.
Councilor Billman? Councilor Peacock?
Four.
Councilor Perry?
Four.
Councilor Forthaus?
Four.
Councilor Crabbe?
Four.
Councilor Punchin?
Four.
Councilor Perez?
Four.
Councilor Sue? Councilor A Smith?
Four.
Councilor M Smith?
Four.
Councilor A Stevenson?
Four.
Councilor S Stevenson?
Four.
Councilor Strick?
Four.
Councilor Traynor?
Four.
Councilor A Wash?
Four.
Councilor M Wash?
Four.
Councilor Welsh?
Four.
Councilor West?
Four.
Motion is agreed unanimously. For committee, all in favour of the motion. Thank you. The next business is to consider a report of corporate director business resources, seeking approval of the Treasury Management Strategy 2019-20 and revised Code of Practice. I will ask Councilor Ed Malcolm to formally move the report. Councilor Malcolm?
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. And this report is prepared to comply with the local government legislation, the Charter Institute of Public Finance, the Code of Practice and guidance from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government. It outlines the council's Treasury Management Strategy for 2019 in two main areas. Part one concerns the South Tyneside Consolidated Launch Fund, and covers the council's borrowing and potential and treasury indicators. The indicators have been used to set a framework within which the Treasury Management Strategy has been developed. Part two concerns the investment strategy that governs the investment of the council's pension fund and South Tyneside Home's cash balances. The strategy has been complied alongside the council's budget. It is based on interest rate forecast availability at the time of writing and outlines factors that may affect decision making in 2019-20. The report also outlines changes to the Charter Institute of Public Finance and the company's Code of Practice on Treasury Management, which was adopted in December 2017 for adoption by 2019-20. The council has recommended to approve the Treasury Management Strategy for 2019-20 and adopt the 2017 Sifter Code of Practice on Treasury Management in the public service and the Treasury Management Policy Statement contained within it. I move the report, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled?
Settled.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, business and resources on the council's strategy 2019-2024. I will ask Councilor Ed Malcolm to formally move the report. Councilor Malcolm?
So thank you, Mr Mayor. The council has funded about £340 million through its capital programme over the next five years. This will build upon the £1.6 billion public and private sector investments in the borough since 2010. It is important that this investment aligns with our key objectives around regeneration, housing etc, so that the funding makes a real difference to residents and communities in the borough, especially in the context of ongoing stability due to funding reductions from government. This capital strategy with compliance to the new statutory regulations sets out a framework for strategic decision making and developing our capital investment plans. These plans also include identification of resources to access external funding where possible to minimise draw upon the council's own resources. It also teaches the government's arrangements around our capital investment plans, ensuring that resources are used effectively, sustainably and spending is contained in affordable limits. Council has asked to approve the capital strategy intended to the main body of the report. Move the report, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled?
Settled.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health, on the South Tyneside oral health strategy. I will ask Councilor Dixon to formally move the report. Councilor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The South Tyneside oral health strategy has been developed to support the council's approach to improve the health and wellbeing of its residents. Poor oral health can affect someone who is supposed to eat, speak, smile and socialise normally, for example due to pain or social embarrassment. Poor oral health can be affected by certain risk factors such as diet, poor oral hygiene, smoking, alcohol and drug misuse. Oral health problems include gum disease, tooth decay, tooth loss and oral cancers. In South Tyneside, these issues remain all too prevalent, particularly in almost deprived communities. These issues can then cause more than just individual pain discomfort, but actually require more support from already stretched care and health services. NICE Guidance, the NICE Institute for Health and Care Excellence, provides evidence-based and cost-effective recommendations to improve the population's oral health through the promotion and protection of oral health through good hygiene, diet and visiting the dentist regularly. To understand the level of oral health within South Tyneside, a joint strategic needs and assets assessment was carried out to inform the priority areas and focus within the local strategy. The strategy aims to improve oral health and reduce inequalities by taking actions in six strategic priority areas: strategy and policy, risk factor reduction, early year settings, primary and secondary education, health and social care staff and finally, Mr Mayor, public sector organisations. An action plan will complement the strategy which will ensure the ambitions within the strategy are implemented, monitored and evaluated to ensure the overall vision is achieved. Therefore, Mr Mayor, I ask members of the council to endorse the strategy and support its publication. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled?
Settled.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health, on the South Tyneside physical activities function. I will ask Councilor Dixon to formally move the report. Councilor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. South Tyneside's physical activity strategy has been developed to support the council's ambition to make South Tyneside more active and to improve the health and wellbeing of our residents. The strategy builds on the existing investments the council has made in the leisure services across the borough, including venues such as Haven Point, Heaven Settle and more recently Javel's Focus. In addition to leisure services, the borough also benefits from local apartments, health wards, access to green spaces and off the coast line. The strategy aims to build on the existing assets within the borough to enable 5,000 fully enough of residents in some form of increased activity. This will bring South Tyneside in line with the national average activity levels and make a big impact when including levels of independence and reduced oral health. The strategy has identified a number of ambitions: to develop traffic free cycles to a walkway connecting South Tyneside to the International Advanced Manufacturing Park and over 5,000 new jobs, all children to achieve the early learning goal in physical activity. More children will travel to school by foot or bike than anywhere in the region, seeing 1,070 more children regularly walking and cycling to school. And we will ensure that physical activity forms part of the quality GP and health professionals' conversation with the 69,000 residents living in the borough or more broadly. We acknowledge to achieve the above ambitions, there will be a collective effort from our partners across the partnership to make physical activity everyone's business. An annual delivery plan and annual report will complement the strategy which will ensure the ambitions within the structure are implemented, monitored and evaluated to ensure the overall vision is achieved. Therefore, Mr Mayor, I ask the members of the council to endorse the strategy and acknowledge its publication. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled?
Settled.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. One question has been received under this rule from Mr David Francis, which has been set out on the agenda. Mr Francis will receive a written response to his question from the lead member, area management and community safety, within seven days of the meeting. The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. No motions have been received under this rule. That concludes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance.